The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to invite to the podium Principal Carl Johnson to present the class of 2019 valedictorian and salutatorian. Come on up, Mr. Johnson.
We will begin with the presentation of the salutatorian. This year's salutatorian for Plainville High School is Daniel Seismula. Daniel has had an impressive academic record at PHS, to say the least. Daniel has the second highest GPA of his 178 classmates in the senior class. He was awarded Gold or Silver Honor Roll every quarter at PHS. He will earn over 29 credits while at Plainville High School, almost a full year's worth beyond the current graduation requirement. He has taken seven AP or ECE courses while at the high school. He is the secretary of the National Honor Society and a member of the Science National Honor Society, and also a member of the Italian National Honor Society. He was awarded the Farmington Valley Superintendent's Award and also the CAS, Connecticut Association of Schools Outstanding Arts Award this year. He has volunteered at numerous events in the community, including the Pettit Road Race, and has also been active in multiple clubs at PHS, serving as vice president of the French and Italian Club. He has also been honored with the CCC All Academic--I'm sorry. He is also a member of the track and cross-country teams, and has also been honored with the CCC All Academic Award numerous times. He is an accomplished musician, who I believe can play over 10 instruments. How many total? Dan has to count. It'll take him a minute.
Wow.
10. 10. I was dead on. Okay. I thought it was 10, but I want to make sure. And is a member of the concert band and jazz band. He plans to attend UConn next year, where he hopes to major in music education. So, Dan, congratulations.
Thank you.
High School, Rachel Parsons. Rachel also has had an exceptional academic record at PHS. She has continuously taken our most challenging courses while at the high school. As valedictorian, Rachel has the highest GPA of her 178 classmates. She will earn over 29 credits while at PHS, again, almost a full year's worth more than the current graduation requirement.
leadership awards to two deserving high school students, Andrea Ybanez and Brady Callahan.
She has taken 10 AP or ECE courses while at PHS, and was awarded Gold or Silver Honor Roll every quarter.
Back over to Mr. Johnson.
She is a member of the National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, and the French The first student we're going to honor tonight for the CAE student leadership award National Honor Society. Rachel was also captain of the soccer team this year. She has been honored with the CCC All Academic Award numerous times, and also the All Conference is Brady Callahan. Brady has thrived academically at PHS. Award for her play in soccer. She is president of the Interact Club and vice president of her class. She is a member of the concert band and also the jazz band. He has been awarded Honor Roll at PHS every quarter. She has also been heavily involved at Interact, donating her time to events throughout the He is a member of the National Honor Society and the National Science Honor Society. community. This year, she was also awarded the coveted CAS CIAC Scholar-Athlete Award. He is a four-year, three-sport athlete. He has been captain of all three sports: football, basketball, and baseball. She plans to attend UConn in the fall studying engineering.
Congratulations.
He has also been honored with the CCC All Academic Award numerous times, and also with All Conference Honors three times. He has volunteered his time with the Plainville Little League, and also Pop Warner, also the Pettit Road Race, and he uses that academic ability to be statistician for the Plainville youth football. Teachers and coaches continuously describe him as a quiet leader who is an incredibly hard worker. He plans to attend Western Connecticut, where he will major in accounting and continue playing football. Andrea has also had an impressive academic record at PHS. She was awarded Honor Roll every quarter. He is a member of the National Honor Society and the National Science Honor Society. He is a four-year, three-sport athlete. He has been captain of all three sports: football, basketball, and baseball. He has also been honored with the CCC All Academic Award numerous times, and also with All Conference Honors three times. He has volunteered his time with the Plainville Little League, and also Pop Warner, also the Pettit Road Race, and he uses that academic ability to be statistician for the Plainville youth football. Teachers and coaches continuously describe him as a quiet leader who is an incredibly hard worker. He plans to attend Western Connecticut, where he will major in accounting and continue playing football. Andrea has also had an impressive academic record at PHS. She was awarded Honor Roll every quarter while here. She is vice president of the French National Honor Society and a member of the National Honor Society. Andrea is a dedicated musician and vocalist, being a member of the Chamber Choir for all four years while in high school, and is often a soulist. You can often hear her performing the national anthem at sporting events. She has been a member of the tennis team all four years, and is serving as captain currently. She has been honored with CCC All Academic Award numerous times. She is involved in clubs at PHS such as Positive Kicks. She is class secretary for her class, and is this year's yearbook editor, co-editor. She was awarded the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendent's Award last year. She has also volunteered her time in the counseling department, giving back to other students. Andrea is attending UConn in the fall and plans to major in psychology.
Next, we will go to our approval of minutes. May I get a motion?
Madam Chair, can I interrupt you for a moment? I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda under 9F, and that would be motion to approve a bipartisan committee of four board members to develop a contract with the new superintendent.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
All in favor? Usually you shouldn't ask if there's discussions.
Is there any discussion? No discussions? Motion carries.
Now you say all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll go to the approval of the minutes. May I get a motion to approve item A?
Madam Chairman, I request approval of the minutes of the April 15th, excuse me, 2019 Regular Business Meeting of the Board of Education.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. May I get a motion to approve item B?
Madam Chairman, I request approval of the minutes of the May 2nd, 2019 Special Meeting of the Board of Education, actually, the Finance Subcommittee.
Do I have a second? Second. Are there any corrections or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to, excuse me, Citizens' Comments. If anybody has anything to say, please step forward.
I just want to state that my name is Pamela Van Beveren, and I'm addressing you the Board of Education this evening due to a busing issue I have regarding with my state licensed family childcare facility. I have established my home for 16 years now in the town of Plainville. Out of the 15 years, I have had bus service for my childcare facility to and from Toffolone Elementary School. This is the first year that was brought to my attention by short notice to start of the school year that was being taken away. Due to stating it was in walking distance to and from school, you decided after the school was already in process to get the children's names, who would need to be bused to and from where they're taken away, literally. This had literally happened to a kindergartner who was at orientation that they were told, giving the bus pass to her, literally taking away 10 minutes later, saying, "Oh, you're a walker now," in front of the peers, leaving the parents in disbelief, not knowing what happened, and being told previously that the child would be being bused to and from my facility. And then to be led to the office to have a separate meeting regarding it, which led to me to find out through the parent that my facility was no longer having bus services. Now, that was the way I was informed, which was, to me, really hardship, because throughout those years, I've always got a phone call from Toffolone School, asking the children's names, who they were, their parents, and how many times, you know, if they're going to be bused service to and from my facility. Now, I was also told that by a Board of Ed member that I was only receiving service due to my son had a disability, which should not have been informed, too, because that's breaking HIPAA law, to mention any child, anywhere, to have a disability. And since that was brought up, I would like to mention that my son, yes, was misdiagnosed, and now he just has ADHD, since it was brought to everybody's attention that he had a disability. Now that's leaking out that personal information. Of going around and calls this year, I was told I have to present myself to the Board of Ed to be able to reinstate this bus service to and from my facility. That's why I'm here in front of you today. You are expecting a preschooler, kindergartner, and et cetera to walk alone and have proper knowledge of road safety, which is not acceptable. Anything could happen, especially when you're not allowed to leave a child home alone by themselves, and now you're expecting them to walk this way, and it could endanger them. The path is not always clear to children's safety from the snow and ice. There isn't sanded in walking. I ran around the school to see how this is held, and even my other children, who do take the bus over, going to a crack school, and they are at the middle school of Plainville for their bus services. It's not always safe. No one truly knows when, even when the path is lit up, even when it's dark out. There's lights there, but they're not always on. And also, I was also told, you know, if there's a bear sighting, the path would be shut down, or even due to a coyote, and the child will need to find an alternate way to school due to the path being shut down. Would the child be given an excuse of absence? The parents go bring their children to my facility so they could go to work, which is a safe and caring place. Now, no contacts are made to me when the path is closed, putting children at risk. I have called the school regarding bears, or loose dogs, or foxes, and so on. I was also stated someone will always be at the top of the path, or halfway down the path, starting this year alone. All the previous years, that was not the case. No one is on the path after school. They expect the kids to group together and walk up the path together, which also, we all know, leading a preschooler and a kindergartner in that situation is not always safe. I pay my business tax. I am looked at as a business person. State views me as a business person. Towns views me as a business person. I also am looked at sometimes as not just residential, but commercial business. An example is as going Home Depot, trying to get carpet for my house. I have to be viewed as commercial and not residential. So, that leads to where other facilities in this town that are commercial, they get buses to and from their facilities. I should not be singled out being a family childcare facility. I do want to mention that I would like to have this reinstated for the future years. It was granted just for this one year. I was wondering if that could be established this time.
Yes, we did give the one-year extension because there was a last-minute change. Again, this was a cost-saving effort to reduce bus routes, and the daycare is within walking distance. But what I would recommend is that Mrs. Van Beveren could certainly put a request for a transportation hearing, and at that point, you could discuss your concerns, and we could have an impartial hearing officer render a decision.
Okay. You'd mentioned to me when I spoke with you that I would need to come to the Board of Ed. Why am I just being told that now, that I would need a transportation hearing?
I'm not sure. You and I haven't spoken since, like, September, I don't think, but nevertheless--
Yeah, but you told me that I would have to address the Board of Ed first.
Yeah, that would be your best first step, but going forward, and I can certainly walk you through the process on how to do that, and now's a good time, because the school year is still quite a ways off.
Mm-hmm. Because I just want to have this, because, you know, even in the summertime, when you do have summer facilities, schools do walk around, take the children out on things, even with teachers and part of professionals, and there's no sidewalks and things throughout there. So, to just say that I'm in walking distance and safety of the families. I'm a childcare facility. I take great care of the children. They go well advanced into their kindergarten years, and even after that, I still prepare them throughout the summer for the following year, and I don't want to be singled out due to this. So, when would be, you mentioned going through the transportation hearing. When is the best time to contact you regarding that?
I will follow with you tomorrow. Thank you.
Sure.
Just a point of order, Madam Chair, and for the folks in the audience. When a person addresses the Board of Education, generally, you won't get a response, so because we just had a response, I don't want people to think we do respond. Generally, the Board of Education has not responded in the past, and will wait to kind of look at what the person talked about, and then get back to you, because some of this is personal information. We don't want back and forth.
Hi, I'm Sarah Limmer. I have children in the high school and the middle school currently. I have two boys that will be coming into elementary school in the next few years. I am a lifelong Plainville resident, and I am here because I have a middle school softball player. And we are, I want to say upset, but that just doesn't encompass how we feel regarding the cuts to the spring sports for the upcoming school year for middle school, how $12,000 is, from what we've heard, maybe 60 or 70 students can fundraise so they can play, but we have other sports throughout the year who are going to get full funding for their sports. I have a 12-year-old girl who loves softball, who gets her out of a funk, out of being lazy, out of, you know, it forces her to make friends, succeed in school. There's so many things that make having this sports program important to these kids, and I just have a hard time going into tomorrow and supporting a vote without knowing that this is something that we can rectify to make fair across the board for all of these kids that want to play sports. I mean, it's just not fair to say $12,000 has to be raised by three teams when there are year-round sports at the middle school. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman. I'm here tonight because there's an executive session concerning your performance as Chairwoman. I want to say I'm here 100% to support your performance. You're in a very, very hostile political environment on this board and in this town, and I think it's very unfair what some people have been trying to do to you. I think you're doing an excellent job with what you have to work with. I see your picture in the paper all the time, at all the events with the superintendent, like you just did tonight. I think you're doing a fabulous job, and anybody who's trying to mess that up for you is not a very nice person. And if this is happening, I hope you take appropriate legal action, because you are indemnified by the town of Plainville. You'll be covered. Don't let anybody step all over you. Next thing I have is the last public hearing we had at the town hall. I mean, there are some issues there that were completely inappropriate, and I'll start with the first speaker. I mean, the antics of that person and the dress attire was despicable. We've had meetings since, and people just talked about that person's dress. And this is what, I don't know what political party was doing, the Board of Education, not you guys, the education system, to bring somebody on like this is just bad, and a person of supposedly a parent saying, with a $38 million budget, teachers have to buy paper and pencils and all kinds of stuff. I mean, I don't think that's Plainville. It was just a ridiculous public hearing. And the other thing that really gets me is the teachers that got up to speak. You know, when you get a teacher to get up and speak on a budget, to me, they're just promoting their own salary. You never see anywhere else in a town, you never see policemen get up there to talk for the budget so they can get police cars, building and grounds to get a pickup truck, roadways to get a dump truck. It's just ridiculous. These people are the most selfish people and greedy that I've ever seen. This education system, the way I've seen it now, is just become just unmanageable, just too much greed. It's just unbelievable. And like this last lady who spoke, you pick something that you should never, ever take away from the kids. It's supposed to be for the children, for piteous amount of money for sports for the middle school and the other things with special ed. You don't take that away. I've been talking about this. You have so many salaries in here that are overkill, redundant, as far as I'm concerned. You should just get rid of at least three, $80,000-plus salaries on staff. You could do that, and nobody would know they are missing, except the person who was terminated. It's just unbelievable. And I'm voting no tomorrow, and this is the reason, because of what you pick to cut from the children is completely wrong, and to even suggest that is an insult to the students and to the parents. We are not stupid. You can't keep doing this stuff. You're supposed to be doing stuff for the children, not making other people rich on salaries. It's just unbelievable. You can't have teachers making $90,000 for 180-day school year when you have a police chief who works 24/7. He carries a gun. He's in charge of the safety of this town. They're probably making more money than him per hour. This has to change. Thank you.
Erica Graff. I also have a daughter who is 12, in seventh grade, and plays softball. I have another daughter who is also in middle school in sixth grade. My daughter and I both wrote letters last week when we heard of the budget not passing. I'd like to read you a portion of hers. Middle school sports are very important here at MSP. Many students participate in the school's sports. I happen to play on the middle school softball team, and the season is going well so far. Anyone who plays a sport gets to meet new people, which can increase their social and teamwork skills. Sports also pursue a healthy lifestyle. And according to the article, "The Impact of Sports on Middle School Students" by Elizabeth Sullivan, "The positive effects of participation in interscholastic sports at the middle school level has been reported in multiple studies over the last several decades." I'd like to note that that says "middle school," "interscholastic sports." It does not reference recreational sports that are proposed in place of some cuts of spring sports this year. Also in the letter, "According to United States Department of Health and Human Services, youth sports participation also reduces the likelihood that teens will eventually drop out of school and increases their chances of attending college. I hope you consider my opinion for the good of the middle school students." Again, that's from my 12-year-old daughter. I'd also like to point out that I believe three of the four students that were just honored, at top honors at the high school level, were all athletes as well. Consider that they must have started in the middle school, in most cases. I don't know that for certain. By cutting three sports, you're taking away interscholastic sports from approximately 60 to 70 students. Consider that impact.
Is there anybody else that would like to get up and speak?
Benjamin Gettman, 5 Dickman Road. I would just like to speak for the selfish, greedy people that were at that public hearing the other night. Every single one of those people was there advocating for every child in Plainville. They were not speaking for themselves. Not one of them was going to lose their job with this budget. Every single one, whether it was special needs, sports, whatever it was, they were all speaking for every child in Plainville. And to call them self-serving, and greedy, and selfish, is petty. And unless you understand how a contract works, that's why the salaries are so high. That's the way it is. One other thing I'd like to address is, I sent an email to the Board of Education on May 8th. I have not received a response. Would anybody like to respond now? Thank you. I thought so.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Mrs. Puglisi?
Kathy Puglisi, 50 West Broad Street. Before I read my statement, I would like to offer congratulations to David, Rachel, Andrea, and Brady, the students that were honored earlier this evening. They are shining examples. They are shining examples of the wonderful things that happened at Plainville and Plainville High School and Plainville Middle School and all of the elementary schools, along with all the help that I'm sure they received from their parents and their support groups. On the eve of another budget vote for Plainville's Board of Education's 2019-2020 budget, I have a grave concern regarding the dysfunction of this board. Your agenda this evening has an executive session with items surrounding discussion concerning the performance of a board member and possible action concerning the performance of a board member. These discussions have become disturbingly common with the Plainville Board of Education. Former Board Chairperson Andrea Saunders, current Vice Chairperson Nicole Palmer, and now current Chairperson Deb Hardy have been scrutinized and threatened with action by the board. Is it coincidental that all three of these occurrences targeted female Republican Board of Education members? I believe every instance has been politically motivated and orchestrated by members of the board during an election year. Not only are these meetings destructive to nurturing a successful board, but they have been costly to the town in the past. All elected members are indemnified from these types of actions, and legal counsel shall be provided and paid for by the Town of Plainville. $10,000 or more in legal fees is an expenditure that should not be a reality for this type of petty disagreement, particularly as we are struggling to pass a budget and meet contractual requirements. The question then arises, why would any individual choose to become a candidate for the Plainville Board of Education that has more than once demonstrated a toxic relationship with their members? Reasons attributed to this evening's actions against Chairperson Hardy are arguably some of the most ridiculous assertions ever. It is the belief that Mrs. Hardy did not display enough public support for the budget. The next question is, what did the remaining eight members of this board do to rally support for the Board of Education budget? I did not see one letter to the editor in any publication encouraging the public to vote yes for the budget from anyone on this board. Vote yes stickers were being distributed at Saturday's Plainville Family Fun Fest to encourage those eligible to vote to support the most recent budget recommended by the town council. Where was that energy on April 30th? The Plainville Community Schools webpage does not have any banner announcement regarding tomorrow's budget vote, nor was there any announcement on April's School District Calendar of Events for the initial budget vote on April 30th. I am not surprised, parents at a recent public hearing stated they were unaware of the date and time of the original budget vote. Frequent communication from the administration is critical during challenging times. I am appreciative of the open lines established between the town and Board of Education during the past several years. We are all responsible for the success of our town. Respect and professional treatment of our elected officials is not only deserved, but sets a tone in our town that we will never tolerate bullying of our employees, our children, or our volunteer elected officials. Leadership also comes from the professionals who are hired to manage our schools and interact with our elected officials. Accountability rests at the feet of all involved in this matter. Plainville is a wonderful town. Do not destroy our community with petty nonsense, and let's pledge to be the best leaders our town deserves. Thank you for your kind attention.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Brian Ruat. My daughter's at the middle school. She's trying her first season at softball through rec. And not knowing if that $12,000 is going to be there for that team next year may deter her from even thinking of trying out. She's enjoying the rec softballs and she has friends on the middle school team. And to take that glimmer of hope away that she might try that and might go to the high school with it, I don't think $12,000 should be taken from any child. I mean, how many members here have kids in the middle school or the high school that will be going forward that don't want to, that don't want to see three organizations cut away? It's not, there should be no pay-to-play unless you can get sponsors to come up with that 12 grand. And then those teams could be maybe sponsored by so-and-so. But to take 12 grand from kids, I think that's completely foolish. I'm working three, four jobs to make sure she has what she needs to play softball. And if the board can't figure out a way to come up with 12 grand or for these other positions, if there's vacancies, why not not fill it? Freeze that position, use that money to go towards the budget. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Is there anybody else that would like to speak? One more time. Okay, Joanne.
Joanne Edman. I don't know, do we have to give our address? 166 West Main Street, just like the town council meetings. You know, I woke up this morning and I'm saying to myself, do I live in Plainville, Connecticut, or do I live in Washington, DC? And what's going on here in this little town is unbelievable. Here you have a Board of Education, well, we got trouble. We got trouble right here in River City. That's what I like to call Plainville. And I just, I can't believe the upheaval conspiracy rumblings of it. Well, it's an actual thing that has happened. And it's not very nice. Now, you have a very, very good, she's very, very capable Board of Ed Chair. And I don't like it that she has, she's being bullied. That is not right. It is not right. And I'm not sure just exactly who's doing it, but don't do it. That is not nice. And she was sick during budget meeting procedures, workshops, and she was not, as I understand it, she was not given any information. So stop the bullying, stop the nonsense, and leave her alone. Let her do her job. And I'm not going to single anybody out tonight. I could, but I won't. But there's been some nastiness, and I'm capable of it myself. And, but when right is right and wrong is wrong, that's how I see it. And there's been some wrong things happening. So that's it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Roberta Loria, 8 Perrin Road. I've been hearing bits and parts of this through most of the weekend and through today's session here at the Board of Ed. And one thing that I have to put in as a question, I was once a vice chair. I was vice chair of the Conservation Commission. Part of my job and my responsibility was to make sure the chair got information. If the chair wasn't available, we tag-team and worked together to get the job done. I'm a bit confused why I'm not hearing that here tonight. If you're going to be successful to do what's right for our children, which is what I was under the impression when I read all those bios during election time, then you all need to get your act together. And whatever the tit-for-tat is, it needs to stop. And if that means you need to find out what your job title and description is here at the Board of Ed, then maybe you ought to find out what it is. But I can tell you, as an individual that has held the position of vice chair, part of that responsibility is to make sure the chair is in the loop at all times. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? One more time. Citizens comments is closed. Council Liaison, Mrs. Puglisi.
Catherine Puglisi, 50 West Broad Street. I have a few items for you regarding some of the activities of the Board of the Town Council. Certainly, we won't talk about the budget anymore. Everybody knows we're going to be voting yet again tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the firehouse. One item I'd like to advise you of is that the Town Council recently was made aware of a proposal for the town to take over, as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, 19.55 acres, which is located near Bradley and the intersection of Camp Street. This is something that has been offered to us as an open space possibility. The parcel shares a boundary with the middle school property. Additionally, the parcel will lend itself for passive recreation as well as potential for active recreation if the need arises. There's also potential for additional open space to be created when the Tyler Farms property on Unionville Avenue is developed. The Town Council at its last meeting voted to accept that parcel as open space, and that's certainly a project that will be actively looked upon as we move forward. We also received a request from American Excavating and Septic for a three-year tax abatement of 30% a year for the construction of an industrial building located on Lewis Street. American Excavating Septic is proposing to construct a 7,500-square-foot facility. The estimated cost to construct the building is $700,000. This was voted unanimously again by the Town Council. We will be also having a work session with our Technical Services Director, John Bossy, to discuss illicit discharge and stormwater connection ordinance. Sounds fascinating. We're going to learn more about that as we go along. A couple more things. The town has been contacted regarding the 2020 census, which will begin over the next several months. The Census Bureau is recommending that municipalities form complete count committees to ensure that everyone is counted as part of the census. We'll be hearing more about that at some future Town Council meetings, but that's certainly something that's important in terms of making sure we understand our population. It certainly also can be used toward grants for educational purposes if we have appropriate census taken in our town. Tomorrow evening, May 14th, there will be a public information session to discuss the Valley Water hardness study. It will begin at 7:00 PM in the middle school. This is a final follow-up to a public information session by Valley Water a few years ago where residents came and expressed some concerns about water quality issues. We will be having representatives from the State Department of Health, Public Utilities Regulatory Agency, the Plainville-Southington Health District, and of course, Valley Water will be there to explain an extensive study that was done regarding the water quality and the hardness in Plainville water. And finally, we were very pleased to be told that Scott Colby, Assistant to the Town Manager, has been recognized as the primary person responsible for having the Town of Plainville receive the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Scott has spent considerable time making sure that Plainville's budget document meets the highest standards. This is an award that is given to those communities that meet the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity has to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well the town's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communication device. This is the second consecutive year that Scott Colby has received the award. And I do want to mention that Plainville has received a number of these awards over the past many years for excellence in our financial document presentation. So we're very happy that Scott has been offered that honor, and we certainly congratulate him on that. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Brummet.
Thank you. Before I begin my report, I would like to commend the Board of Education for their decision earlier this evening to appoint Stephen LaPage as the next Superintendent of Plainville Community Schools. Now, they'll do it a little bit more formally. So I just want to say that you've made the absolute right decision to ensure that our very special school district continues to move in a very positive direction. Steve began his career as Principal of Plainville High School in 2010, where he led PHS for six years. He initiated many positive programs, such as Super Senior and Devil's Advocate, just to name a few. He's earned the respect of parents, faculty, staff, and students as he's led our high school with integrity and passion. Since July of 2016, Steve has been my right-hand man. He is conscientious, hardworking, and an ethical leader who puts what's best for our students at the heart of all he does. I was able to count on him to support all of our district initiatives, and I'm very grateful for the tremendous support he provided me in our three years together. Tonight, he is joined by his wife Denise, son Brandon, they can wave a little bit in the back, daughters Kylie and Michaela. Thank you for sharing your dad or your husband with us, whatever the case might be. Steve, I wish you nothing but the best as you take over the helm on July 1st. As always, if you need anything, let me know, but you will be great. Thank you.
Would it be okay if Steve said a few words now?
A few? A few. This is a test.
This will be brief. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Brummet for her incredible leadership to our district. She's been here for over 20 years, but as far as being Superintendent for the last three. And I also want to thank her for her recommendation, for consideration of me to assume this very important role and for your consideration. I remember one of my administration program professors advising us, never follow a strong Superintendent or a strong and well-legged Superintendent. He said, don't do that. Instead, his advice was to follow the biggest dud of a Superintendent you possibly could. So here I am, not following that advice at all. I couldn't be following a stronger leader, in my opinion, or a role model for what a district leader should be and all the qualities that they should represent. So Dr. Brummet's been more than a colleague and a mentor, but she's become a good friend. And I'm really grateful for all that she's done for Plainville and for me, learning from her professionally. She's a big, you might not She's a big, you might not know this, but she's a big Steven Tyler and Aerosmith fan, so she's kind of the rock star or Steven Tyler caliber leader that Newington's fortunate to be getting. I offer my sincere appreciation to the members of the Board of Education, who have a very difficult job, and I really appreciate your collective trust in me for this position. I will do my very best for Plainville. I couldn't be more grateful or honored to have this opportunity and to work in partnership with the Board of Education in fulfilling the responsibilities of this job to the very best and the highest level I can. And I think we're going to have an amazing run together, and I look forward to it. I'd like to thank the many people here around town who have given me their votes of confidence, and members of the staff and community who have come up to me and said, "We really don't want Maureen to go. We love Maureen, but since she's gone, I hope you get the job." So I appreciate that, and I appreciate my family, my beautiful little Kylie and Michaela and Brandon and my wife Denise, who are here tonight to offer their support. So without further ado, I know there's a board meeting ahead of us, but thank you, and I appreciate all your confidence in me, and I will do my very best to be a balanced, dedicated, and forward-thinking and caring leader for this district. Thank you.
Very nicely stated, Mr. LaPage.
Thank you.
All right, and now I would like to ask Carl Johnson to come back to the podium. He will introduce Dave Gagnar, who needs no introduction, who has developed the concept of a manufacturing enterprise, which I have already told the Board a little bit about. But as always, Dave is an innovative teacher leader who I believe has created something very special. Mr. Johnson.
Just very quickly, you know, I asked if I could introduce Mr. Gagnar tonight. He's going to present more about this opportunity that we're going to be providing for our students. And, you know, I really just want to give credit to Mr. Gagnar, and Mr. Chase is also here, and other members of the Unified Arts Department, who have been incredibly forward-thinking about how to meet the needs of our students moving forward. And I think you'll see tonight that this is going to be an incredible opportunity for our students in the future and also meet a need that is out there in society right now. So without further ado, Mr. Gagnar.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That was very nice. Good evening, Board of Education, Administration. I think it was about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, and we had this discussion in Carl's office about some sort of program, some sort of class, some sort of thing that we could really provide the students of Plainville that other school districts don't have. As a Plainville High School graduate myself, I definitely know the ins and outs of the experience. So as a tech ed teacher, for those of you that don't know, technology education has certainly changed through the years. And as we begin looking at a program, having these discussions with Mr. Johnson, and we start kind of diving deep into the data, which we are data-driven school system, so we look at the specific data that we collect. And interestingly enough, if you look at the ITE, the Industrial Technology Enterprise piece, the skills that we are looking toward, the personal skills, the workplace skills, and the technical skills, most folks would think, well, that's commonplace. But as we start looking at the data and as we start diving deep, we notice that we do have a lot of technical skills, and we do have a lot of personal skills that the students have, and workplace skills. Part of the problem is, when we start looking at those specific skills, we couldn't combine them with the current classes that we have. So we wanted to make sure that we had good communication with the industries, and we wanted to make sure that we had curriculum that focused on the needs of those industries. So as the slide just showed, the personal skills and the workplace skills were something that we really didn't connect. And this program, the Industrial Technology Enterprise piece, is going to allow us not only to focus on the technical skills, which if you haven't been through our school system, we pride ourselves on having some of the best technology in the state. And we credit that to the consistent effort that the Board and the administrations continuously support, that movement forward, which is not easy to do. As you can see, the next slide here, we've quoted a couple of folks, a couple small companies in the state of Connecticut, one of them being Pratt &amp; Whitney. As you can see on this particular slide, they are looking for some help. And part of our discussion when we started looking at this program was how much help do they need? And can Connecticut support some of that need? So we look at this Pratt &amp; Whitney company, who has hired at least 15,000 people globally since 2015, but what does that mean for Connecticut? The 5,000 or so Connecticut employees, and of course, all of the 6,000 retirements are up and coming, and that will happen within the next 10 years. And then, of course, Robert Leduke says that he's looking to hire 8,000 additional workers. So specifically, one company is looking to hire quite a few people with specific skills. And those skills, again, technically, we pretty much have. We have the technical ability to teach the concepts and the skills that our students need, which is fantastic. The funny part is, if you look at the Pratt &amp; Whitney piece again, the 8,000 people, the 6,000 retirements, and the 5,000 or so in 2015 only tell part of the story. If those of you know about Pratt &amp; Whitney, they have a large supply chain, meaning they have a lot of companies who support those folks who work for Pratt &amp; Whitney. So that means here in Plainville, we have small manufacturing businesses right here in town who employ quite a few people. In the greater Hartford area, there are tons of small manufacturing facilities that support just Pratt &amp; Whitney, for example, to the tune of Pratt &amp; Whitney has just signed an agreement in 2018, so we'll say last year, to the tune of $16 billion that they've agreed to supply those manufacturers locally to increase supply and also increase workforce. So that was $16 billion. That's a lot of money. The next slide shows another example, and we could be here all evening showing examples of the manufacturing industry. But this one here with Electric Boat, if those of you that are familiar with this facility and this company, the president had a few statistics to share, and that is that, yes, they hired 2,241 workers last year, and they expect to bring 1,400 this year. An additional 900 you'll see from Connecticut, and 500 now from Rhode Island. So we no longer have enough folks supplying these companies with the skills that they're looking for. Once again, if you look at the employment that is expected to reach 20,000 in the 2020s, which isn't too far away, we again need to supply these folks with people who can do the jobs. As I mentioned earlier with Pratt &amp; Whitney, the general dynamics is only part of the story. They have 450 suppliers supporting their industry, their company. So 450 suppliers, if we did the math, we can certainly see the impact on workforce here in Connecticut. We wanted to show a little bit of the industrial growth, and I know it's tough to see on the PowerPoint, but if you look at the top 11 employment projections through 2026, statisticians, home health certainly almost the top two. But the third one is the CNC, the Computer Numerically Controlled Machine Tool Programmers for metal and plastic. It's looking for a 33.5% estimated growth, which is a large number. It doesn't seem it, it doesn't really appear to be too crazy, but hourly rates, they're estimated right now at $33 an hour. And again, these careers, these jobs are out there and expected to be out there for a length of time. If we go down a little bit more, the software developer, applications person, that's expected a 29.3% increase. Mechanical drafters, who'd have knew? The mechanical drafters are going to be in demand again, which if we look at all the data that we've collected and all of the programs that we're looking at, of course, it makes sense now that we need to have drafters for designing and engineering. The last two, the number 10 and 11, are mechanical engineering technicians and mechanical engineers. So if we look at just the top 11, the industrial growth this is projected for 2026, we really are looking at this cohort of jobs, of skilled jobs, that will need to be filled. The next slide, if we look at manufacturing specifically is not the only industry going through this growth. In fact, in talking to the Construction Education Center here in Plainville, they're estimating 43,700 or so jobs in construction through 2021. So these jobs, again, in construction, trades, the HVAC, plumbing, sheet metal welding, and carpentry. So another genre of workforce that we need to address as a state, as a school, and something that I think this program will provide some assistance with. Some more data, and I know, again, looking at this slide, it's difficult to see, but basically, this identifies the construction areas. I'll explain it really briefly, but if we look at the first line, the first job is for a supervisor for constructions and trades. The supervisor does require a five-year degree or college degree. All of the other jobs below the first line are either apprenticeships or training programs. They do not require a college degree. So what does that mean for us? We're looking at specifically some growth in some trades, electrical, plumbing, carpenters, boiler makers, pipe fitters, steam fitters. Those are the fastest-growing areas. So once again, just a different look at the data that we've collected over the last few years. So the next slide shows what we're going to do. If you don't know or if you haven't heard, there certainly is a skills gap, right? There's a skills gap in Connecticut. I'm sure you've seen articles. I'm sure you've heard about it. So the purpose of this program, the purpose of Plainville High School looking at specifically what we're doing in the areas that we just went over, is to address that exact thing, the skills gap. So it is my opinion, if we do address that skill component, the skills that industry has told us are important, I think the skills plus the job opportunities, the students of Plainville will have a unique experience, one that I certainly would challenge any other district, to have a high school be this comprehensive in-house. So that means the students don't have to get shipped out, they don't have to be bussed around in our own facility. To have a way to address those skills and have the support from the district to provide job opportunities for the students who have those skills, it's a recipe for success, really. So what does it look like if we specifically look at what they do after high school? So our students, right now, have the opportunity to choose what they want to do after high school. Some may go to college, some may go to technical school, and some will go to the world of work, the military services, et cetera. My belief is, some of the students that we have now currently may not know exactly what they want to do after high school. Even to this day, with all of the technology and all of the information that we have, the students may not understand what that skills gap is. They may not understand that the workforce down in New London, Electric Boat, or Pratt &amp; Whitney, or a small supplier in Plainville, needs them tomorrow. They need them to go to work tomorrow. And we might have some students that say, "You know what? That sounds good." We may not. We may have some students that say, "I want to go to college, and I want to be that construction engineer or the supervisor, et cetera." And that's fine, too. But we are here to provide them the opportunity. The data here is interesting because if you look at 2018, 19, from a study that Kevin Fleming did, 66% of students who graduate high school can be successful without going to college. It's not for everyone. Some students go to college and change their mind. Some students are very successful at college. But if we have a situation where a student says, "I don't know, I'm on the fence," this particular program might help. So the ironic part is, when we talked about the skills gap, when we polled, a Harvard study polled some industries, including colleges, and they asked them, "What skills do you see our students lacking? What skills do you find most important that need the most work?" The ironic part is, there's really not one technical skill on that list. Whether you're looking at a four-year, two-year, or even a high school, the skills that they're looking at improving are not technical. They're the other skills. Some people call them the soft skills. So the next slide shows us what we've been thinking, including us here at Plainville High School. As the Unified Arts Instructional Leader, we've always said, "Well, we have students who are college-ready, and we have some students that are really going towards the career." So we said, "It's either college readiness or career preparation," and we kind of made that divide. But I think now, we need to look at it in a different way and say, "You know what? You can be college-ready and you can be career-ready if we look at the right skills." And that means a student could leave high school and get a career and still go to college, or get the technical support that they might need to grow in that industry or that career that they chose. And let's face it, sometimes they choose a career and it's not what they thought it was, so instead of going to school first, maybe they get a taste for it first and decide to continue or not to. So what are the skills? Our program is going to look at the personal skills, the difficult ones, the ones where my colleagues will ask, "How can I teach professionalism? How do I teach work ethic? A sense of responsibility?" A sense of responsibility and a sense of self-motivation? How do I teach that? We teach it through the idea of enterprise, and that's why our program is called the Industrial Technology Enterprise. If we run a small company, if we run a company-driven enterprise within the school, we will get to those skills. We may not have a lesson plan for work ethic. We might think we do, but we have to develop a scenario. We have to develop a system in place to get to work ethic, to see what happens when they're under pressure. And we can do that in a variety of ways. We can see a sense of professionalism when a student presents a project, or presents something to someone. We can sense the self-motivation when they're here on a Saturday or a Sunday, working on something, right? So those personal skills are hard to teach. I'm not going to say that it's easy, but it's something that we will address. The next one is the workplace skills. Once again, I can hear it now, in, in August and September, when I have a colleague say, how am I going to teach decision-making, or teamwork, communication and leadership? With that enterprise component, the project-based learning, the skills-based learning, we will develop scenarios and situational skills tasks that will get them to at least try those out and see whether or not they are successful. And I'll tell you, we will probably have many failures. We will have students be upset, and I'm sure we'll have students think that we're too hard, until they go to Pratt and Whitney, or a supply chain for Pratt and Whitney, and they say, we have a deadline. You didn't meet the deadline. Those are the skills that the workforce is begging for. Those are the skills that we want to reinforce here and to provide to our students. And of course, finally, the technical skills. I hate to say it, but this is the easy part. We can provide the technical skills all day long. We have the equipment, the facilities, we have state-of-the-art equipment, supplies, you name it. But the technical skills, we can't teach unless they have the first two. If they don't have the personal skills or the workplace skills, it doesn't matter what we give them to use, what we give them as a project, they won't be successful, just like if they went to a company in town and said, I don't want to do that. Not, I don't know how to do it, I just don't want to do it, or I'm not interested in it. So the technical skills are easy. When we look at the computer and technology component, we're far, far above where we should be. We're doing excellent. The service, the service orientation, again, depending on the industries that we choose, it's called industrial systems. Our industrial systems right now, we're growing. So can we cover manufacturing? Yes. Can we cover construction? Yes. Can we cover the majority of the areas of construction? Yes. Can we grow? Of course. We can offer more at all the time. But this is where we're starting. We're starting at the beginning, addressing the personal and workplace skills, offering the technical skills. The service orientation piece is going to be related to the industries that we cover, and of course, the safety and health component. All things inclusive will give us this enterprise component that we're talking about. So we have already partnered up with a few areas, and it's growing even today. The Construction Education Center is located in Plainville, and we have articulated an agreement with them. We can send them whoever we want, whenever we want. The students here in Plainville are very lucky because it's actually in town. So if you're interested in a trade, and you have, you can demonstrate those skills to us, that you have personal and workplace skills, some technical skills, we will recommend you to the Connecticut, or the Construction Education Center in Plainville, Connecticut, which is fantastic. We have already articulated with Middlesex Community College for manufacturing technology. So we have one course already articulated, meaning the students can sign up for a course here at Plainville High School, and they will be getting dual credit in manufacturing here at Plainville High School, as well as Middlesex Community College. For very little cost to the student, the only cost would be to take the placement exam. Once they take the placement exam, they are technically a Middlesex student, meaning they will have an ID, they can use the facilities at Middlesex Community College, they can use their library and any equipment that they have, which is a great opportunity as well. The Tungusis Community College component is really tied to our business enterprise, and they, they have a course called Business Solutions, or Business Enterprise Solutions they are developing, and we will articulate, most likely next year, with Tungusis, right down the street, again, not too far. The local business and industry component is ongoing. We have a list growing and growing. The good news is we have these support systems. The good news is we have an idea as to what we need to do. But we can't begin sending students out in the industries if we aren't ready with our program. So this is why tonight, I want to show it off, showcase it, and get everyone's opinion, but I believe that this will help our students move forward. And after they go through a program like this, we then confidently can say, we're sending a student to your industry, or to your business, or to your, wherever it might be, school or college, and we would be confident in saying that they have the skills to be successful. They've been tested through and through. So what does it look like? We are really on three missionary pieces, and that is, the first one, to promote and provide a workforce for our local and statewide industrial, manufacturing and construction jobs. So the technical jobs that are out there, we want to make sure that they have the skills, not just technical skills, but the other two that are really important as well. We want to educate the students about current and changes that will happen down the road. There are always things that change in each industry. Each is, in particular, changing constantly. So it depends on what those changes are, and we will make sure that we are working with our partners to transmit that information. And we also want to make sure that we provide a competitive skill set. You know, we talk about rigor, relevance, well, this is it. This is the real world rigor and relevance. This is the skill set that gets jobs and careers. This is the skill set that the future in Connecticut, and the nation really, is going to need, not only in the construction and manufacturing industries, but those are the two that we're focusing in on now. Room to grow is, is always good, but these two are really important for us at this juncture. So the layout, the quick layout of the entire process, we want to cover the industrial systems, how systems work, how the industries work, and there are a lot of industries. There are 16 career clusters. We're going to hit some of them with the industrial systems component. The technology and engineering, once again, I hate to say it, but that's seemingly the easy part. We have the technology, we have the engineering structure in place. And then the last piece is, is really a fun one, because this involves the business, entrepreneurship, and really the enterprise component. And the enterprise piece is really around a product, it's around a project. And as I pitched this to, I know Dr. Brummett, and Steve, and even Mr. Alderstein, you know, we got some good feedback from them, and that is, when you actually try to build something with students, or even people, you're always going to run into problems, no matter what. Having the business pieces, we put dollar amounts, facetious, but we still would put dollar amounts to things. And if we decide that we're going to manufacture something, then we need to look at all of the processes that go involved, that are involved with manufacturing, including, where do we get materials from? How do we get them here? Do we have suppliers within our school? And so on and so forth. The enterprise piece also brings in the communication soft skills. It brings in that teamwork. It brings in the, the sense of owning something, or being part of the business. So in my opinion, all three work hand-in-hand to provide that scenario, where we want the students to apply those personal skills, as well as those work skills, and finally, apply the technical skills. And we'll, we will be able to see where we're failing, because really, part of learning is failing. And once you fail, you fix it. You figure out the solution to it. Nothing's perfect, we know that. Here's a sample, quick, of what a day in the enterprise would look like for a student. Mr. Johnson and I have spent a few moments looking at how we would devise a plan to get students into a program like this, and here's kind of our solution for now. And that is, students would have a half-day in this program, or encompassed a half-day. An example schedule would look like this. So a student would have a construction class, a CAD and design class, which would be articulated with Tungusis or Middlesex, depending on what happens with Tungusis. The business solution piece, we certainly are looking at the business systems or the solutions course. So we have the business part, the design part, and the construction, or the industry part. The construction can be substituted for manufacturing. So again, depending on the interests of the students, and depending on what industries they're interested in, then we begin looking at fine-tuning for each student. This would be open to all students at any level. Our kind of process of picking the students, we would have an interview with them. We would have an interview with the parent or guardian, to see whether or not this is really a good fit for the student. After we have those discussions, then we begin planning out their year. It is possible to have that flex time component if they are in need of recovery, some credit recovery issues. It's possible for those students to be part of an R&amp;D team, a fabrication team, work visits to local businesses, the college visits, guest speakers, trainings, and so on. The neat part for us is the last one. The certifications piece is something that we will house here at Plainville High School, and we will call them Plainville High School certifications. Out in the industry, those certifications are not going to be seen as a diploma. They're not going to be seen as anything but a document that says that the students have had experience and have followed procedures to be proficient at whatever certification they have done. So an example would be, students can use a computer numerical-controlled device, and we have a lot of them, specific to whatever industry, or specific to whatever task it was. So if it's a laser system, a robotic arm, so on and so forth, right down to individual pieces of equipment. So if it's in construction, for example, we could have certified people who are certified to use specific equipment, right down to table saws, and so on and so forth. If we're looking at welding, for example, a segment of the industry, we will have the opportunity to provide certifications in welding, and then break it down, specific parts of welding, the different types of welding, so on and so forth. So we will have eventually, these quote-unquote "Plainville schools," the Industrial Technology Enterprise certifications, which, again, is something for the students to aim for and wish they can study up for and pass the certifications at a proficient level. So finally, this is our goal. We all know that graduation is kind of the end in mind for students who start a high school career. But really, if you combine the high school career with employable skills, I think we have something special. I think we have something where the students can have more ability to choose their direction, at least more tools in their tool belt. And those tools can be used in a variety of different ways. The last thing is, those employable skills, they don't have to be industrial. They don't have to be used only in the industries. More importantly, they're transferable. So if you're going into the healthcare industry, or if you're going into another industry, those employable skills are transferable at all levels, because we know. Those soft skills, those personal skills, those workplace skills, no matter where you go, those are the important ones. You can always learn something new. And that is the program soon to be at Plainville High School. I can take questions if you'd like, but...
Certainly.
Sure.
Well, if Mr. Johnson can have enough coffee, we might be able to render some schedules
and, and things. But yes, this is our goal for the fall. We are actually beginning targeting students, and I say targeting, but inviting students to look at the program and see if it's something that they're interested in. This is all be it while running normal day-to-day stuff. This is not anything extra, this is no extra cost to the board, to the taxpayers of the town. It's using what we have more efficiently.
Thank you so much. You have put so much time, effort, and fun into this. It just is really excellent, and thank you. This is really, I hate to use this term, but it's right, this is really spot-on. This is what we need to be offering to our students. Thank you, thank you so much. It's excellent presentation.
You're welcome.
I have one question.
Sure.
So this will be like a mini-technical school, where they're getting hands-on training so that they can go up into that workforce, and be able to get a job with more training from that company.
Right. It's, it's similar to a, you know, the technical school piece. If the student leaves high school and wants to be specifically a welder, or go into the HVAC field, they will be more ready, basically. They still will have to do the apprenticeship, they still will have to get that training specific to the industry, but at least will know, and they will know, that they're ready for that industry.
So you're giving them the start before they actually get out into the workforce and say, oh, I really don't like this, I should have done, and that's an excellent job, so.
Yeah, it's a head start, basically. We're, we're giving them a feel, and you know what? Some students may not continue on. They may say HVAC, or plumbing, I thought was really something I wanted to do, or manufacturing, or programming machines or robots. I thought that's what I really was interested in. And if they decide in high school not to, that's also a win, because they didn't go out of high school thinking that that's what they wanted to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Gagnar? I just want to thank you, Dave. You did a fabulous presentation. It's been about a year in the making, or more probably, but it's nice to see it launching, and I really appreciate your, your thought behind it, along with your team, Mr. Chase and Mr. Johnson, making it happen in the schedule, working the magic on the schedule. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, I have one last component of my report, and that is the... Alrighty, I have one last component of my report, and that is the proclamation. It was National School Nurses Day last week. As a former supervisor of school nurses, they're now supervised by Vicky Trzynski, I can tell you, they have an incredibly difficult job. It is far more than scrapes and upset tummies. Many of our students come to school requiring complex medical procedures and attention. So it's only fitting that we say thank you to our nurses with the following proclamation from Governor Lamont. On behalf of the state of Connecticut, I, Ned Lamont, Governor, take great pleasure in recognizing school nurses. School Nurses Day recognizes the important role school nurses play in the state of Connecticut. Providing students with access to healthcare professionals is a critical component to ensuring our students are ready and able to learn. The commitment school nurses have to our students is commendable. I thank you for your outstanding dedication to the success and wellness of Connecticut's future generations. Therefore, I, Ned Lamont, Governor of the state of Connecticut, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2019, as School Nurses Day in the state of Connecticut. Thank you. Thank you to our school nurses. They really do a wonderful job by our students, and we couldn't do without them. So I just want to make sure they know how much we appreciate them. And that does conclude my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. Moving on to Board Subcommittee Reports, Student Representatives Report.
All right. It's just me again today. This is AP Week, so it's a little bit hectic. Ally is out studying for calculus, which will be taking place tomorrow, so best of luck to her. Last Tuesday, we started our AP testing with Spanish, Spanish language and composition, and we end this Thursday with AP statistics. So Thursday is also our final band and chorus concert for the year. After this, I'll be leaving to go to a band rehearsal that I'm about a half hour late to, but I can hear them and they sound really good, so I'm excited to head over. Friday, our physics classes will be heading to late compounds to apply our knowledge to some real-life examples, so we're looking forward to that. Nice break from all the testing. Thursday, May 23rd, is our super senior banquet at the Aquaturf at 7:00 PM. And two days later, we'll be back at the Aquaturf for our combined junior and senior prom. Monday, the 27th, is Memorial Day. The PHS marching band will be performing two songs this year, and it will also serve as our audition tape for the Disney trip that's coming up in December. I know everybody's very excited about that. Spring sports will have their end-of-season awards Wednesday, the 29th. Our one-act plays are happening Friday and Saturday, the 31st and the 1st. Make sure to stop by and see a show if you have the time. And some final senior activities happening this month. Class night will take place right here at 6:00 PM on Thursday, the 30th, and we will take our annual field trip to Camp Chase on Friday, the 31st. Just some quick updates about sports. I have word from an inside source that the girls' tennis team is doing okay. The team won their most recent matches, and our only two captains, our only two seniors, qualified for states yesterday, so congratulations to them. Boys tennis is also working towards states. They'll have two more meets before their season is over, and the next one is Wednesday at Bristol Eastern. The track teams are working hard to improve their personal records to finish the season strong, but have had an outstanding season thus far. The baseball team has also had a favorable record at this point in their season. They'll be playing their next game tomorrow at home versus Ram at 7:00 PM. And the softball team will be playing next at Bristol Eastern on Friday, and I have nothing to report on golf. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Facilities. And Becky, you also have the Policy Subcommittee Report.
There is no policy.
Okay, and Finance Subcommittee Report, Mrs. Peterson.
We started out with a budget of $38,329,105, and we were instructed by the Town Council to reduce this budget by $100,000, which now the final budget is $38,229,105. I have to say, it was rather difficult to, you know, to go through this and to find things to cut away from, but Sam and Maureen and a lot of them, and us included, were able to come up with a solution to get that down there. So hopefully, everybody will go out and vote for our budget. I'd hate to think if this doesn't pass, what the third round would take. So please tell people, family, friends, enemies, whoever, to get out there and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have advocacy update, but no names here yet. Okay. The Turf Committee Report, Dr. Brummett. And the PAC liaison for Foster, Plainville High School.
Yes, the High School PAC met last week on the 8th. They reported their treasury right now stands at $3,315.17. They have enough funds on hand to meet all of their scholarship requirements and other expenses. They are still selling lawn signs at $10 each. Those will be also at the super senior banquet on the 23rd. They're also doing a fundraiser where they're going to have a raffle for parents of graduates to upgrade their seats to VP seats, and with also reserved parking. Those are $10 each, which is kind of a unique event that they're doing. They did elect their new chair. Karen Lyman is going to be the new chair of the High School PAC next year. And they also are also reminding everyone that there is the high school concerts this Thursday, super senior on the 23rd, the senior athletes banquet on June 5th, and the Night of Excellence is on June 13th.
Thank you. Next, we have the Tafalon PTO Liaison, Mrs. Consalvo.
Tafalon teachers are grateful for all the teacher appreciation gifts. It's very nice of parents to think of the teachers and treat them every year. We're having the Color Run on June 1st. All elementary students are invited to register and join us. A Color Run is a fun new race concept that involves students running by adults who throw powder paint at them to cover them in a rainbow of colors. In Makerspace, students built raised beds and are now growing a variety of vegetables. Families are volunteering to water the plants throughout the summer. We look forward to a big salad on the first day of school next year. Also, the PTO thanks all the parents who came out to support the budget at the Town Council meeting on Monday, May 6th. Tafalon is planning summer reading nights. The plan is for volunteers from the Tafalon staff to join students on three evenings during the summer to keep the reading excitement alive. Hopefully, some grant funding will support a book giveaway, and we're looking forward to this new endeavor. Also, the PTO has donated scholastic dollars to every classroom for books. And the Tafalon PTO scholarships this year are going to Plainville High School seniors and the past and past Tafalonians, Kayla Datala and Andrew Kane. And lastly, the PTO held elections, and the officers for the 2019-2020 are President Anka Cook, Vice President Bethel Hairston, Treasurer Sarah Blake, and Secretary Kristen Campbell. And that'll be all.
Thank you. And next, we have Mrs. Wells for the PTO for Linden.
We're discussing the 5th grade graduation, which is on June 13th. I'd also like to take the opportunity to recognize the current officers of the Linden PTO, Sarah Wartonak, who is the president, Sean Sullivan, who's the vice president, Nancy Atuno, who's the treasurer, and Brandy Kay, the secretary. They are a small but mighty group that get a lot done for the Linden Street School, and they should be commended.
Next, we have the Liaison for the Middle School, Mrs. St. Lawrence.
So we actually meet tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 14th, at 7:00 PM, where we will elect new officers for next year. But last Tuesday, we had a nice teacher appreciation breakfast for our students, for our teachers and our staff, with a lot of help from parents. And we're also getting ready for our 8th grade promotional dance, promotion dance, on, I believe that's Monday, June 17th.
That's it, thank you. And next, we have Ms. Paul Mary for the Wheeler Elementary.
At the last meeting, Maureen came and spoke to everybody about the budget and encouraged them to vote yes on it, as I believe she did at every PTO this year. There was also a lot of planning for Teachers Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, and they have their last meeting of the year tomorrow night.
Thank you. Next, we have the Cruck Council Report, Mrs. Burrow.
I attended the Cruck Council last month. Don't have anything to report, but the next meeting is this Wednesday, actually. It's the annual meeting of the Cruck Council.
Thank you. And next, we have the Chairperson's Report. I just want to start by saying, tomorrow, go out and vote. It's an all-day vote. Please get out there and support the budget for us, and thank you. The superintendent's showcase, Makerspace, display was awesome. The garden display was very interesting, and the young student explaining the new procedures step by step, and was very happy and excited to let us know these steps. And it was awesome to see him just so excited about what he was doing. We also have a, we had a gorgeous sunny day for Family Fun Fest. This event was attended very well. Many vendors and displays. I was in the booth with the Our Lady of Mercy, which is my church, and I was there for hours, and it just seemed like I had just gotten there, but there were so many people around that they were just coming up and talking to us and just meandering around, so it was a great event, and luckily, we had the good weather. Also, the class of 2019, the Super Seniors Awards, is celebrated at the Aquaturf, as was stated earlier, on May 23rd at 7:00 PM. These awards recognize those seniors who made it through four years of no accumulating disciplinary consequences. Four years for high school kids. That is really something. I mean, this is amazing, but they've done it year after year, and there are quite a few of them. We are very proud of them and what our schools and teachers can do for all of them. Congratulations to all. That's the end of my report, thank you. Any unfinished business? Okay. New business? Board open forum, all board members? Does anybody have anything to say?
Just, I attended the 50th anniversary Tafalon school. They did a great job up there. It was really a lot of effort put in. As you walk through the school, every door was decorated with a different decade. And as I said, if they wanted one for me, they'd have to put on a third floor, but so I didn't quite get there. Mr. Mazorko, I can hear him laughing over there. So, but it was really well-attended, nice, nice event. Family Fest as well, just want to give a shout-out to Donna Cavallaro and her crew. This is something they've done, I think this was the sixth or the seventh year. And it was a, it was a great, it was a great day to have the festivities outside, and it's a completely free event for families to come spend the day, unless they want to, you know, purchase something from a vendor, but for the most part, everything is free. Like to add my congratulations to the salutatorian, the valedictorian, and our cave folks that won their, won their awards this evening. And remind everybody to vote yes on Tuesday. And that's it, for me.
Thank you. Next, request to approve contract.
I wanted to make a comment.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that me and Mrs. Consalvo went to Newington on Tuesday night to support Maureen when they voted her in as their new superintendent. And they absolutely know that they're getting the best. And I made it clear that we really weren't too happy that they stole our superintendent. But I'm very happy for Maureen. I know it's going to be a great opportunity for her. Having said that, congratulations to Steve. We're very happy to have you. We know that you're going to continue everything that's great about Plainville. And I guess, if Maureen had to leave, you're the best person to take over. So, Maureen, you'll have to come back and visit. I also went to Family Fest. It was a great day. Ran into a lot of people, was a lot of fun. And vote yes tomorrow, please. Thanks.
Next is the request to approve a contract for CT Institute of Blind. Sam?
So this is an annual contract that you approve?
No, I'm, go ahead. I'm sorry.
For 4,600 square feet that the Institute of the Blind rents in the middle school. It is a small rate increase, so additional revenues to our budget, and other than that, there's no changes.
Next, does anybody else have anything to say?
We have to, we have to make a motion to approve that contract for the Institute of the Blind. So I'll make a motion to do so.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question, Carrie?
Point of order, Madam Chair, we have to go back and do Item C, which is the acceptance of Dr. Brummett's letter of resignation.
Madam Chairman, I move we accept with regret the resignation of Dr. Maureen Brummett as Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
All in favor?
Can we have comment?
We should have.
Yeah, we should have comment. Nope, can't do it. Let it go. How do you like that, for a surprise? Dr. Brummett has been an awesome leader. When, when, when Dr. Kitching left, we thought, how lucky can we be to have somebody ready to step in, that's that ready, that knows the district, that can just lead us without missing a step? We're about to be lucky twice, but right now. You know, there aren't too many districts that can create people within their, within their system that can do that kind of thing and have that kind of leadership in their system. And we are so fortunate to have Maureen for the three years that we had her. And congratulations, I know you're going on to a awesome place where they will much appreciate your talents as well. We will miss you.
Yeah, I would just like to add my comments to that, that I have learned a great deal from Dr. Brummett, as she worked so hard. She has done more things that no one knows are getting done in this district. And, and Mr. Lepage said, when we were discussing earlier, that she is going to be a real tough act to follow. And I think he understated that, but I have every confidence that he will do this, and I think we are in good hands. But I want to thank Dr. Brummett from my heart for all that she has done to this district. And just that she and her husband Gary are, I consider them friends. And I had the distinct privilege in years going by of working with her father when my days in the banking business, which also Kathy remembers. So it's, it's a, it's a long, a long friendship, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. We should vote on the question.
I'm sorry?
We should vote.
So are we, I'd like to...
No, we had a motion on the floor to...
Great, excuse... So...
We had a motion on the floor to accept her resignation.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Did she vote no?
Everybody's...
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to approve the appointment of a new Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Stephen K. Lepage?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Can we have, can we have comment on this one, too? I hate to ask you to have a comment. So I just have to say, like I, like I said, who is lucky enough to have a person just there, completely and totally the right person for the job, with the experience, knows the district, knows what we're doing. We did it once, we actually have, are going to be doing it twice. It's unbelievable. There are many folks who might say, how could you possibly just not go out for a search? But really and truthfully, there was no need to search. As I said, I think when we brought Maureen, same thing, you know, just no need to look. The person that we need is right here with us, and we are extremely fortunate to have somebody of the caliber of Mr. Lepage here with us.
Next, we can go to the consent...
We have to vote on that one, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So now, Deb, I just want to make a, I did add something, I know it's not on your agenda. I added the Item 9F at the beginning, if you recall. I added the Item 9F at the beginning, if you recall. It's not, it's not going to be on your agenda, but I'm going to make a motion to approve a bipartisan committee of four board members to develop a contract with the new superintendent.
And I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Are we done now? Can I get on with this report here?
Now you can go to your Consent Agenda.
Consent Agenda. Mr. Hal, Stephen for the Budget objective summary.
We're on the Consent Agenda, right? So, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, unless someone has anything they want to remove off, but...
No, I will second the motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Motion, motion to adjourn?
I think I'll abstain from that, see if...
You don't want to second?
I'll second that motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're done.